This conference will now be recorded.
It's 5:30. Open the meeting, please. Real call.
Commissioner Beeson?
Here.
Commissioner Spielman?
Here.
Commissioner Stover?
Here.
Commissioner Tweedy?
Here.
Mayor Warren?
Here. If you want to stand, please stand for a little bit. And a present of allegiance.
Thank you for bringing us here tonight. I just thank you that we got some good rain and didn't have a lot of thunderstorms last night. Also, just ask you to be with us through this meeting of everybody that needs to speak to be able to speak clearly and get their point across. As this in the name of Jesus.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Is there an addition and additions?
Yes, Mayor, we'd like to add in addition to new business under City Manager Department and item number two. It'll be an ordinance authorizing the vacating of a portion of Ash Avenue from the west line of 13th Street to the east line of 14th Street in Arkansas City, Kansas.
Hey, hear a motion for?
I may we approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Hey, any other discussion? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. An approval of the agenda.
We approve the agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Awards of proclamations. We got two proclamations. I'll start with the first one, the fair housing month of Arkansas City. Whereas Congress of the United States passed the Civil Rights Act of 1968, of which Title VIII declared that the law of the land now would guarantee the rights of equal housing opportunity. Whereas the city of Arkansas City is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide a fair and equal housing opportunity for all. And today, many realty companies, associations support fair housing laws. And where the fair, excuse me, and where the fair housing groups in the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development have through the years received thousands of complaints, alleged, allowed, alleged illegal, illegal housing discrimination and found too many of the, too many that have proved upon investigation to be violation of the fair housing laws. And whereas equal opportunity, housing opportunity is condition of life of the city that can and should be achieved. Now therefore, the mayor of Arkansas City, Kansas does hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as fair housing month in the city and express the hope that this year's authorization, authorization will promote fair housing practices throughout the city, Cali County, Kansas, United States of America. The second one would be the Earth Day and Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, Jay Surley Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day should be set aside for planting trees. And whereas this holiday Arbor Day was first observed in the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and is now observed throughout the nation and the world on the final Friday of April. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of topsoil by the wind and water, cutting heat and cooling costs, moderate the temperatures, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees in the city of, and whereas our city increased property values and has the economic vitality of business throughout area, increase the vitality of business areas, unify our community and our source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Arkansas City has been recognized as a tree city, you just say by the National Arbor Day Foundation for 30 years and a rose so desire to continue its tree planting ways. And whereas first celebration 53 years ago in 1970, Earth Day is an annual event celebrated around the world on April the 22nd to demonstrate support of environmental protection and now includes events coordinated globally by the Earth Day Network in more than 193 countries. And now therefore, the mayor of Arkansas City, Kansas does hold hereby proclaim that Monday, April the 22nd, 24th is Earth Day in the city of Arkansas City and further does also hereby proclaim that Friday, April 26th, 2024 is Arbor Day in the city of Arkansas City urges all citizens to support effects to care for our trees and woodlands and to support our community forestry program and to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of presence of future generations. I don't, we don't have anybody here accepting, but anyways. Okay, it is what it is. Okay, consent agenda?
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Okay, and we had some clarifications. We had two Roger Macklin, the name was not spelled right. It was cleared in Rogers, Scotty Rogers.
Yeah, make sure that's fixed.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, under new business.
City Manager Department, consider approval of city insurance coverage for property liability vehicles and equipment.
Okay, like we looked at other insurances this year. It was time to kind of take a look and see if we could get some bits from other, other carriers and, and we were not able to do that. That some, the only one that is covering cities right now was said right off the bat they're going to be higher than what we have. So some of the others weren't even bidding on municipal insurance this year. So what we are proposing that we renew would be with EMC again. The commercial property changes in that, in the past, we've had a $25,000 deductible on wind hail. They're not going to offer that for us anymore. Kind of the base was $70,000 deductible. And then they did give us an option of a $50,000 deductible. It's per occurrence except for on two buildings and those two buildings, it would be each building until the roof was replaced and they would fall under the per occurrence again. So that, so that was a slight increase in premium to for higher deductible yet we, but just the way things are working out this year, that's what we proposed to go with. The other changes that you'll see in the premiums is the automotive. Again, our fleet is, we've upgraded our fleet this last couple of years, a lot, a lot newer vehicles and so that is reflecting in our premiums. The other one that we want to propose a change is on crime. It's a very small part of our premium, but I think we had a $100,000 crime coverage currently. And we want to increase that to $250,000 coverage just because everything costs more and protect, protect the city better. And then the other change was on the cyber liability. We currently have a $500,000 policy and we would like to move that to a $1 million coverage for liability coverage. Just because cyber attacks are so much more prevalent and it's getting more and more expensive to, to correct them when it happens. So overall, we had a slight increase from the previous year, but we are increasing the coverage on some areas. And then again, the wind hail changes were a significant change from what we've had in the past. Do you have anything on that you'd want to?
The two buildings not covered under that would be this building, City Hall and Central Shop. So I think Tony's going to be looking to replace that roof in the near future.
And then when those roofs are replaced, those will then fall underneath the.
And the increase, we probably have a budget. You had a.
Yeah, I budgeted for the majority of that, but this does go into next year. The policy is through March, so I'll make up for the rest of it.
Okay, okay.
Mayor, I move we approve the insurance coverage of property liability vehicles and equipment.
Second. Okay, it's been moved to second. Any other discussion on this? Like everything else, it keeps going higher every year. Have no control over that.
We have had some thefts in the last year, haven't we? Didn't we lose a lawnmower last year?
Yeah, we've had a few thefts. There's some other equipment out of the, we've had a few thefts, equipment out of the park shop. On the.
Somebody burned down our building down at the park.
Yeah, Paris Park damage.
$50,000. Other discussions, a voice vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number two, an ordinance authorizing the vacating of a portion of Ash Avenue from the west line of 13th Street to the east line of 14th Street in Arkansas.
All right, so a request was made to, for this vacation by one of the adjacent property owners. Street was never built there. It was platted, but never built for whatever reason. There was actually even a carport that was built on it. I think maybe the previous owner didn't even realize where his property line was. So the good thing is this would make that compliant and it would allow this property owner to, to take over maintenance of that property. I don't know if he had any other major plans for that, but he, he's the one that requested that. All the adjacent property owners were notified and none of them had any concerns with this. And our technical advisory committee was also notified. Planning Commission held their hearing on March 12th and voted to recommend that you approve this vacation.
How long's he been taking care of that? I thought I'd read somewhere he's been taking care of the property for a while.
Yeah, I think the current owner, Michael Woods, that actually applied for it, hasn't owned it for a very, a really long period, but it's, yes, it's been a good amount of time that.
You'll go back on the tax rules, right?
Half of it would go to him and half would go to the neighbor behind him and then the north half, plus the school district, because that's, they own that.
So the two neighbors will be splitting part of that property then, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I may we authorize the vacating of a portion of Ash Avenue from the west line of 13th Street to the east line of 14th Street in Arkansas City, Kansas.
Second. Hey, spoon a second. Any other discussion?
Josh, if, if they're splitting that property, are they going to take care of it themselves at the county?
I'm sorry?
If they're splitting that property, are they going to, are the two people that are getting it going to take care of that on their deed in the, in the county?
It, it'll just happen automatically.
Okay.
This will be filed alongside their deed.
Okay.
So when they were to sell their property, that pop-up is.
Okay.
They don't have to do anything.
Any other discussion? No, it's a real call vote.
Commissioner Beeson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Spielman?
Yes.
Commissioner Stover?
Yes.
Commissioner Tweedy?
Yes.
Mayor Warren?
Yes.
Environmental Service Department, item number one, a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to accept a bid by McGuire Iron Inc. And subsequently issued the notice of award for the golf tower rehabilitation project at an established base bid amount of 195,200.
No, 195,000.
No, I didn't expect.
Yeah, what did you say?
Sorry.
Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners, it's time to rehabilitate the elevated tower up north by Creekstone. And we received like, McGuire Iron was the, was the least at 195,200. Highest bid was 388,750. So there's quite a span. But I do recommend McGuire Iron. They, they have a good reputation. They've done, done a lot of this type of work. So is there any questions on the project?
What does that bidding give us? Are they, they're going to drain the tank and go in and are they going to coat it inside? Fix anything that might be damaged?
Yeah, Charles, we've through the years, well, usually about every three to five years, I have diapers inside of it. And so I keep an eye on how much the inside's deteriorating. Of course, we'd like for it to look nice on the outside too. But the inside's, you know, pretty important part. So yeah, it'll be taken clear down, everything sandblasted according to spec. They have to use a certain material to blast it with. It all has to be cleaned, just dry and coating put on inside and outside.
What do we do when we drain that tank? Like the creek and stuff, a backup water?
We, thanks to the commission, we were able to replace the pump station that serves the north pressure zone. But we have real good BFDs on all three of the big pumps. So basically, they'll isolate the tower. We, we can set the BFDs to pressure. And then it'll pressure, it'll just keep pressure in the lines. And it'll deliver just as much water as if it was going to the tank. There should not be any trouble of keeping Creekstone going.
I just got one question on that, just because of how our infrastructure is. That extra pressure, when they pressured up the water plant, it kind of, it blew a lot of, of lines at the time. Are we expecting, I mean, is there any possibility of that?
I'm not real worried about that until we take the Bryant Tower down. Because those main breaks were in what we call a service pump zone, which is the, pretty well south of Radio Lane, Radio Lane and south. And that's, so the pumps pumping from the water plant to Bryant Tower is what, well, that's where we get the pressure for that zone.
So in other words, the Bryant Tower will go from there to Creekstone when they're doing this?
Yeah, we'll be pumping out a pump station I'm talking about is right next to.
Okay.
And we'll set the BFDs for pressure. And I'm not quite as worried about those lines on the north pressure zone.
Why not? Are there newer lines or?
Newer and better.
Okay.
Which, that's what we have to do in the ice service pump zone too.
How long, Rod, will this take? Take, I mean, too much months or?
Way McGuire works, I wouldn't think it'd be much over a month. I'm not sure. Of course, you get done with that part, your time, and then we also have to fill it and, and pass a bacteriological test. You know, make sure it's okay to put online. And then when that happens, we'll be back online to normal.
And this is the first time we've done anything to that tower, right?
Yes, it was built in 95 and this is the first time it's been rehabbed.
And we'll go another 20 years in?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. And the money we've appropriated will become from where, Jennifer?
He budgeted for it.
Okay.
Did you know where we budgeted more than this bid?
Uh, yeah, I budgeted 212,000.
Just in case they find something they're not expecting.
I'm like with any project, that's what will happen.
Would it, would be any weak spots in here where we may have to weld a patch in here or something like that or not?
Didn't be, not that I saw on the videos from the diapers.
Okay.
Pretty sure they'll be able to just take the coating, old coating off and apply the new.
With that being said, I'll make a motion, a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to accept a bid submitted by McGuire Iron Incorporated. Subsequently issue the notice award for the golf tower rehabilitation project at the estimate cost amount of 195,000 dollars or 195,200 dollars. Second. Hey, it's been moved to second. Any other discussion on it? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Rod.
Yeah, thank you.
Item number two, a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to accept incurred freight costs associated with the previously approved of reverse osmosis membranes purchased from Kansas Water Technologies for an amount not to exceed $3,400.
Yeah, that was 672 membranes we purchased to replace all of them. So there was a substantial freight. And you don't ever know what the freight is. So, so I requisitioned a PO for the cost I know and then, and well, a lot of times there's freight added on to that, so.
Where was this coming from?
I think from Toray, and I'm trying to think, where was Toray at?
Okay.
In California?
Yeah.
Toray's a big membrane manufacturer.
So we could have just sent one of our drivers to go pick it up. Get it, volunteer Tony and Brian to take the weekend and go get it.
They might have, oh, they might have been able to get them all under track. Remember, remember that song, the underpass was 13-2 and the.
Well, let's keep that in mind for next time when you hear something like that, Tony.
And this is the first time we've changed those memory.
We thought we'd get five to seven years and we got five.
Yeah.
Plus, we've learned, learned a few things on how to maybe make the next set even run longer.
What, how's that?
Oh, by watching that, by keeping carteach filters right and doing a little better cleaning place, we're getting some real good support from Kansas Water Technologies that go along that lines. So critiquing our cleaning place is going to help too.
That's good.
Make a motion, we authorize a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to accept the cost associated with the previously approved reverse osmosis membranes purchased from Kansas Water Technologies for an amount not to exceed $3,400.
Second. Okay, it's been moved to second. Any other discussion? If not, it's a voice vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Rod.
Thank you.
Public Services Department, item number one, a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to accept a bid submitted by Melton Industries of Wichita, Kansas to recoat the entire northwest community center roof for an amount not to exceed $27,900.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, it's been a while trying to get this roof done and finally it wasn't kicked out of the budget, so.
That was lucky.
We're happy with that, yeah. This is just a 10-year coating. We got three bids on it. Two of them, one was a 20-year quote for 44,000 from Roden Roofing. The other one was three options from Armor and he did come in lower on the 10-year bid, but it took him a month to get me the quote. So I don't feel comfortable waiting on him another month or two months to get in and get the job done. Melton Roofing said they could start after we got, gave them the okay. They've done work on the fire department. Their work, they do quality work, pressure wash it down. They'll tighten all the screws on it and come in and coat it with a 10-year warranty on it for anything, hail damage, whatever, they'll come back and fix whatever leaks. So.
They're out of Wichita, aren't they?
Yes, sir. Yes. Two out of Wichita and the other guy from Armor who's out of Valley Center.
We don't have anybody in town that can bid that stuff, right?
Well, you do, but it's not the quality of work that these, this is all these guys do.
Did they even bid on it?
Yeah. I didn't ask lawyer. I didn't ask any of the local roofers because they're mainly shingles or DPO roofing people, but.
And honestly, you guys have looked at, at doing this yourselves for a little, I know.
Patch up the front end of Central Shop.
Right.
For a while. It's, yeah, there's even, you guys know what, you guys did a great job, but there's tricks that they would have that would. Yes. Add to it. So it's definitely needs. The problem we had was keeping the consistency of the thickness.
Right.
Of the stuff that goes on it. I think they're using acrylic coating, but we didn't have the proper guns. We don't have all the nail guns you got to take to re-passing all the bolts down and batteries and everything to go.
Well, Central Shop would be the next one we need to work on, Tony, or?
No, I've actually got a new roof sitting there at Central Shop. It's finding the time to get it on there.
Okay.
You know, one of these days when the wind's not blowing, we'll get that on there.
Maybe.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I may with the city of Arkansas City accept a bid submitted by Melton Industries of Wichita, Kansas to recoat the entire northwest community center roof for an amount not to exceed $27,900.
Second. Okay, it's been moved to second. Any more discussion on it? Okay, it's a voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Tony. Number five, items of discussion by city commissioners. Anything?
I have none.
Okay. We, we have nothing, comments from the audience. Hey, city managers update the.
So on Monday, April 8th, at the Wright Room at 6:00 PM, there's the outstanding student nominee reception will be going on. So if you have time, you might stop by there. And again, this will be the nominees for the outstanding students. And so it's, these are really some, some amazing young people that, that are nominated and up for this award.
Was it 6:00 PM?
Uh, yeah, 6:00 PM at the Wright Room. On April 10th at 10:00 AM, we will be having a, a fit opening for CBDG Housing, the, the final house project in our CBDG renovation grant. So once we get this one done, we'll close out that grant and then we'll be able to apply for another grant in another area of the community. We'll also have a meeting with, for the master plan progress on the residential property on the north end of town. So Josh and I will meet with, with the PEC and kind of get an update on what's going on with that. Just reminder, on the April 12th and 13th, we have the League of Municipalities Leaders Academy in Manhattan. And I believe Tad and Chad and myself will be going to that. And then on April 22nd, will be the outstanding student awards banquet. So the, the students that, that will be selected for the, for the awards will have a banquet for them and that's at 6:30 at the Wright Room. And we'll make sure we get invitations to you on that. At the next meeting, there will have an interlocal agreement between Winfield, Arkansas City and Stretherfield for, for the bonds that will be used to purchase the property that Stretherfield's buying. Winfield's leading the, the effort on the bonding and so we'll just have to do as, in a local agreement like we do on other projects that include the three cities. So just want to kind of make you aware that's coming up. The, oh, on the walking trail, so the, the trail from Parish Park to Levy Watson, our guys tackled that this past week. They borrowed some equipment from. They borrowed some equipment from Winfield and, and did a pretty good job. They had some learning curves and I know, um, Tony may, may have some different opinions on it, but, uh, it was a really great way to get that trail put in, um, for a contractor to do it in our traditional grant, um, procedures. So, um, we'll see, uh, it, it should turn out pretty nice. And again, for, for the grant, for the one grant we received from Sunflower Foundation, which we were going to use for our matching dollars, we were able to complete that. Also on the central, the trail that's going to go from Paris Park down to, um, uh, some or, uh, yeah, summit and then up back around. So it's at the Phase Two Trail, I think is what it's called. Um, the stormwater permits were approved today, so those were signed and sent in. So I think everything's done now that needs to be done for that to go out to bid. So you cannot, uh, back the bids here in, uh, early, early summer. And the truck stop, um, they have all their permits now to start that process. Um, the, they got their, they got their stormwater permit done and they contacted us and they'll be moving equipment here in the near future. They've got to coordinate with the archaeologist, uh, that needs to be on site just during the, the grading portion of the project. So, um, again, you'll start seeing some very moving pretty soon on that and I think that's all I got.
What about the work session on the twelves? If you guys are going to be gone, if we're going to have it?
Yeah, do we want to schedule a different day or do we, maybe on Monday or?
Monday's that student point six.
Yeah, but as far as a work session, if we wanted to do something over at noon or, I don't know. Um, I, I'm not sure what's on the man on the agenda at this point. It may be one of those meetings we don't need, uh.
Yeah.
That'd be fine with me. You're okay not meeting one day?
Yeah. As long as you don't doctor pay.
If, if something pops up that's really, you know, that needs to have your guys' consideration and discussion, then we'll figure out how to make that meeting work. If it's a kind of amount of that meeting, then we'll just worry about it.
Well, that's, uh, Mayor of German. Uh-oh, favor side.
Aye.
Carries.
Okay.